The order, Madam Clerk, if you could do roll call, please. Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Basham.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Dog.
Here.
Commissioner Hattis.
Present.
Commissioner Colleen. Commissioner Colleen. Commissioner Kenlock.
Present.
Commissioner Kneecik.
Here.
Commissioner Morey.
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
She's here.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Commissioner.
I have muted myself.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Varga.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Badun.
Here.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Here.
Chair Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Colleen. You have a corn present.
Okay, thank you. I'll tell you, see if you can give Commissioner Colleen a text or phone call. Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the September 29, 2020 meeting.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Port.
It's been moved and supported. Any corrections to the minutes? Any corrections to the minutes of September 29, 2020? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Anyone wish to? Thing.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item.
Chair's remarks.
I just want to once again wish Commissioner Irma Clark Coleman a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Was on yesterday. I heard all of the birthday wishes before we started, so just formally happy birthday and many, many more. And then also, I think it went out in e-communications about the Ray Solomon's viewing on today in Funeral for Tomorrow. And we did provide a memorial resolution signed by all commissioners for tomorrow's services as well as flowers. And then another giant, Lois Lester, passed away and we'll send a memorial to him as well. That's all I have right now.
Unfinished business, there is none listed. We are moving to new business. Item number one is a discussion on naming a building in the new criminal justice complex after the late Wayne County Sheriff Benny Napoleon.
Okay, thank you so much. So of course, we were all devastated by the unexpected, untimely passing of our dear Sheriff Benny Napoleon. And it still doesn't seem real, but it was brought to me by Commissioner Martha Scott that we should consider naming the complex, the criminal justice complex that is currently being built after him. So I wanted to have it on the agenda today for a brief discussion. So I will turn it over right now to Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on our former sheriff. And this is one of the reasonings that I thought this building should be worthy of being named in his honor. Because we have named the Hamtramck Building after a former deputy sheriff that I knew. Sheriff Benny Napoleon, he served the citizens of Wayne County and the cities of Detroit. Honorably, beginning when Napoleon entered the Detroit Police Department in 1975, where he quickly rose up to the ranks. He served as police chief from 1998 to 2001 under former Detroit Mayor Dennis Archer. In 2004, he was made Assistant Wayne County Executive, and in 2009, he was appointed to the Wayne County Sheriff, which he served from 2009 until his untimely death in December 2020 due to complications from the coronavirus. As Sheriff Benny Napoleon served the citizens of Wayne County with distinction. He was committed to the community and the youth. Each year, the department, the sheriff's department gave underprivileged children gifts during Christmas, and he was always present in the community, addressing the needs of the community. He was just a wonderful person, even a personal friend, I imagine to just about all of us. No matter where I would go around this county, Benny was going to be there. And most of the times, he even brought his family. He would have bought tables and stuff. When I went to churches, Benny was there. It was just a wonderful person, came from a beautiful family. So I just thank God for his life and that, and hopefully, when the time comes, I will be able to make a knowledge of resolution to have his name on this complex. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak on our former wonderful Sheriff Benny Napoleon.
Thank you so much, and of course, this deserves some preliminary conversation that we're having today, and we'll continually discuss this. The complex is not to be completed until October of 2022. So I'm sure sometime in the year 2022, we'll continue this conversation, discussion, because, you know, Sheriff Napoleon meant so much to all of us. I see a hand, Commissioner Kenlock.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say that I thought that it was the tradition of the commission. You know, may be new on the commission, but I'm not new to understanding practices and customs that have been, and courtesies that have been acknowledged by this body since it has been constituted. And that is for the commissioner, whose district where a project, an action of this county occurs, is the commissioner who actually would move, or who would act, or who would be at the center of that action. Benny, Sheriff Benny Napoleon has a place in all of our hearts. And he is someone who I've known, you know, most of my life. And what I wanted to just say, that we also, in relation to this, I know that you put it on a committee of hold to bring it for discussion. But I also would like to say that I believe that this would best be discussed in something that is inclusive of everyone, but the best would be discussed and disposed of in a committee that this body set up, a committee dealing with that complex. Because there, I've talked with commissioners and people in my district and folks just all around. A lot of folks absolutely believe that a memorial should be raised, and particularly this particular project, he should be recognized and be recognized in. But there's a lot of thoughts regarding this enormous project that has basically been on the books and in a planning stage with, and albatross as well around the county's neck. So all I'm saying is, is that as the commissioner for District Two, as a vice chair of the complex committee, I would like to be extended all of the same courtesies that you would any other commissioner with a development or a project that is occurring inside of their district. And I know that we're not going to really take this up until a more suitable time, but I just wanted to put that on the record that I absolutely would like to be extended the same courtesies that you all would extend yourselves.
Thank you. And of course, once this is, must be to the point where we're making some decisions, they will follow all the proper protocols. I see Commissioner Scott saying again. Yes, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In response to the commissioner that just spoke, Kenlock, I did send this to the proper committee that I was told to send it to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Palomera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, would like to be reminded, how many buildings are part of that complex that are being built right now?
I'm gonna toss that over to our chair of our complex committee, Mr. Anderson.
Well, Madam, Madam, let's see. Okay, I'm not muted. Madam Chair, I just wanted to say Commissioner Scott is correct. She did make the request to the committee. The, as chair of the committee, I had the discussion with yourself, and we decided that it would be something that the entire commission should be involved in. And the committee that I chair is not one that we passed, we're more of a observation type of a committee and trying to keep track of how everything is going with the construction and what's happening. Are we staying on target and everything? And, and the cost lines that we had set up for that project. As far as the number of buildings in that complex, there's, of course, there's going to be the sheriff's department. There's going to be a court building, the jail itself, and there's going to be a juvenile detention center there also. As I believe, and Mr. Heath is online, I see, and Mr. Heath, I'm not sure. I think there's going to be certainly connections to some of those facilities, but would you like to speak on that with the permission of the chair?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Let me go.
And, and ma'am.
Commissioner Kenlock.
I did, I did want to say, add one thing.
Let me go to Commissioner Kenlock, and then I'm gonna go back to Commissioner, to Mr. Heath for some discussion, I think he'd like to bring up. I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson, what were you saying?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm in total support of naming at least a portion, if it's decision of the commission. But I do believe it might be appropriate to name the facilities, the portion of the facilities that are in the sheriff's department and the jail itself. But that's a decision I'll support either way. I mean, whatever the commission decides.
Thank you. And of course, we'll have much more conversation about this. Commissioner Kenlock.
Madam Chairwoman, I, as you said, we'll have further discussion. And I also do believe that extended discussion should be had in this regard, and we absolutely should have it in the committee that is dealing with the jail project, and it's not just dealing with the numbers. I see all sorts of it that have come to that agenda, and I would like, at the time, at some point, future date, when it's appropriate, that we have full conversation and a recommendation actually come from that committee. And I'll discuss that with the chair of the commission, as well as the chair of the committee at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we move forward, the chair of this body, myself, will decide where that goes and how that discussion is done.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Varga, before I go to Commissioner, Mr. Heath.
I just wanted to say Jewel is smiling down on us today because Commissioner Kenlock is following in her foot. To be the maker of whatever happens at the, at the Wayne County Jail, because it would have been in her district somehow, Mr. Kenlock. So it reminded me of Jewel, so it brought a smile on my face, Commissioner Kenlock. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Heath, go ahead with some final comments, sir.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. James Heath Corporation Council and Chair Bell, thank you for initiating this preliminary conversation on the CJC naming question, and thank you for allowing me to appear. Also like to acknowledge Commissioner Scott and also Commissioner Kenlock, who, all of whom have taken a real interest in the CJC and participated since, certainly since Commissioner Kenlock has been here and taking leadership along with Commissioner Anderson of the CJC Committee. And so just a wonderful opportunity to be here and to speak about this. So thank you very much. Also like to wish my Commissioner, Commissioner Irma Clark Coleman, a very happy birthday from, I think, your favorite constituent. Um, so, to, to the question about the buildings on the complex, the building consists, the complex consists of five primary buildings, the ADF, the Adult Detention Facility, the Juvenile Detention Facility, the caf, the Criminal Courthouse. There's what we call a Facilities Maintenance Building, the FM Building, and also an administrative building, which is about 131,000 square feet. It will hold the sheriff administrative offices, as well as the prosecutor's offices, a jury selection assembly area, rather jury assembly area, as well as a cafeteria which will be open to the public. And so those make up the primary buildings. All of you will remember, there's another structure there, the Central Utility Plant, that will provide power to the entire complex. Just basic information about where we are, this will be kind of old hack to the members of the CJC Committee. The facility is, we're roughly at the 50% mark, just north of 50% completion at this point. We are on track to be done in the fourth quarter of 2022. And that will be final completion, and then the end users will be in, begin moving into the facility immediately following that. I should say that I appreciate the comments of all of the commissioners who have spoken, and I will assure you that the executive office agrees that we need to jointly work together to come up with a fitting tribute to Sheriff Napoleon, who's meant so much to this county, and also to the sheriff's department in particular, sheriff's office in particular. We believe, in keeping with all the comments made, that there will be ample time as the completion and construction goes forward, that we will be able to discuss exactly how we honor the sheriff in the context of what has been raised so far. I can tell you that we all agree that it should be done in a cooperative manner with both the legislative and the executive bodies, and I appreciate the spirit with which you've already gone about it, Chair Bell, in that regard. There's, there's no specific law that's been laid out in terms of how we go about. We can use past precedents. We can look at the naming of the airport terminal in honor of Mr. McNamara. There's been other county buildings which have been renamed, and all of that, all of those have been done cooperatively between our two branches, and so I would anticipate that that would be exactly what we would do in this instance. And so we keep the Criminal Justice Subcommittee completely up to date on a monthly basis progress of the construction. We will continue to do so, and we will add to our to-do list at a appropriate time that we can sit down and figure out exactly how we should honor Sheriff Napoleon. And so I thank you for bringing it up. I am always available to answer any questions regarding the CJC project. We can, I can bring to you, as we go forward, Chair Bell, you know, kind of some milestones, and when we, you know, start looking from a timing perspective about when it's appropriate for there to be formal action by, by your body, by your body on this, and just look forward to continuing conversations on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heath, for that update. We appreciate the hard work you've put into the justice complex and keeping the surprise. So thank you for that. And look forward to continued updates from you about the complex. Vice Chair Palomera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank James Heath, and just as a follow-up to my question of how many buildings and what they're going to be used for, I realize it's still very early in this thought process. But I like the idea of, of working closely with the administration and the public to identify a place where the most people, the general public, I guess, law-abiding general public will be, have a chance to, to see this. And from what I've just heard, it sounded to me like the administration building would be that, but it's way too early. And I just want to thank everybody involved for recognizing a wonderful human being, and, and let's do it in the proper fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Again, this was a good discussion to have. I want to thank Commissioner Scott for putting a pen to paper that's on our heart, and that's how do we honor Sheriff Benny Napoleon. And I appreciate that letter that she wrote, and I appreciate the efforts. And as I said, this is on all of our hearts to do something to honor his memory. So as we go along next few months, we'll continue to have conversations, working with the administration to make sure that that happens. And of course, working with Benny's family as well. I think that they should have some input in this as well. So we'll have, we'll continue this conversation, but I promised Commissioners that I would have it on our next house. I want to live up to my promise. So thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that to us, and I look forward to further discussions as days and months go by.
And thank you for having the discussion today.
Absolutely. Any further comments before we go to the next item? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
Item number two is a discussion with the Chief Financial Officer Huey Newsome and Guide House LLP on American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
Okay, so half of you are on the Ways and Means Committee and heard this presentation last week. The other half of you did not. So I wanted everyone to be aware of what we're doing, or what the process is with the American Rescue Funds, how much we receive. There have been no decisions on how to spend those dollars. I asked commissioners to send me your thoughts on how we should spend those funds, so that we can give them to the administration and the Guide House to vet out if they are part of the guidelines set up by the federal government. So at this time, we're going to have a presentation from Huey, Huey Newsome, on the rescue plan dollars and any information that will help us as we make sure those dollars are spent in the best way possible for the assistance of Wayne County. So Huey, I would turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'm gonna do is, I'm going to also now defer to Khalil Rahal, who's gonna introduce Guide House, some things that we wanted to give you all an update on. And I want Khalil to kind of walk you through where we are right now, and then defer to Guide House. With that, Khalil, are you on, are you on the line?
Yeah, I am. Thank you, Huey, and thank you, Madam Chair, and to the rest of the body. It's good to see everybody again.
Khalil, let me stop you right now. I'm sorry. I see Commissioner Basham's hand. I wanted to see if he had something prior to us getting started. Commissioner Basham? Thank you. You're on mute, Commissioner.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't want to get in front of this, but I, I do have something I would like to enter into the discussion relative to the Marine Patrol and the federal grants. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Khalil. Go ahead.
No, no, it's okay. Thanks. And thanks, everybody. Obviously, everybody knows that Congress passed the American Rescue Plan, which is a $1.9 trillion plan. And it's a huge influx, and as a result, Wayne County is getting approximately $339 million. And obviously, there's a lot of questions about, you know, how we use the funds, but I think there's a few things folks should know. First, we have not received the money yet. I think Huey's best estimation is roughly in the next three weeks, it could be earlier, before we receive the first half of the funds. We will receive the funds in two installments, and the next half will come about 12 months later. Second, you know, we haven't received any guidance. We know what the funds are purposed for, and you're going to hear a little bit about that today from Guide House. But there's a lot of guidance and auditing rules that still have to come out, and so, you know, even though we can always talk about different ideas and different needs, whether it's the Marine Patrol or, or lead in water, and I think, you know, other commissioners have mentioned certain things. We don't have the guidance to tell us whether these things are eligible or not yet, so I just want folks to be aware of that. You should also know that we have until December 31 of 2024 to use the funds. In addition to that, there are other restricted funds that are part of the bill. You'll hear a little bit about that today as well. We are not the only entity, obviously, in the state of Michigan to give money. The state of Michigan itself is getting about $5.9 billion in direct allocation. Every municipality in Wayne County is getting some portion of the allocation. You all will hear that today, and you can see what communities in your districts are going to be receiving. And, you know, another thing to keep in mind is that just recently, the Biden administration released some details about the American Jobs Plan, which is another almost $2 trillion, $2 trillion plan. And the reason why that's significant is, you know, you may have a priority, and you may want to see something happen, and we may agree that it's a priority, and we want to see it happen. But where the source of funds may come from, it may be just a subject of debate. And so I want you to understand that it's very early on in the process, but the Biden administration has proposed another bill. It hasn't gone through the House and Senate yet. Don't know how it's going to end up on the other side. Don't know if it's going to become law. But we're certainly monitoring it so that we can be as strategic as possible and maximize all of our opportunities. The administration, with the direction of the county executive, has said to conduct a lot of outreach on this. And that obviously includes this body, as the commissioner said, you know, we did have a Ways and Means meeting. We're obviously here today. We'll be back. We'll come here as much as you want us to. You know, for other elected officials, the deputy county executive has a deputies' meeting for them to share information and raise issues there. Obviously, our directors go to Janelle Allen, who is our, you know, COO and handles operations. But we've also conducted a lot of other outreach in addition to those things. We've talked to our community colleges and workforce development agencies collectively. We've been in contact with folks from the business community and philanthropy. We have, and I think we've had a lot of good discussion with the state. The county executive has had multiple discussions with the governor. I have had a lot of discussions with the state budget director, Dave Massaron. We have a reoccurring meeting to discuss their use of the funds, our use of the funds, and the eligibility of the rules as they come out, which they haven't yet. Finally, you know, I would like to invite everybody to our Friday calls. I know a handful of commissioners, you know, religiously show up on a weekly basis to when we have them, and then, you know, others, you know, a little bit more periodic. But we love to see as much involvement as that is possible. About a year ago, when the pandemic started, we decided that it would be a good job to start gathering together a group of folks to talk about how the pandemic is affecting our economy. And the purpose of that group is to absorb information, just deploy valuable information. And hopefully, the information sharing leads to more programming. I think it did. It really revealed like our $50 million small business plan and other types of plans that we deploy through the pandemic. And it's been really well attended. We've never had less than 50 people attend. We've had at times, you know, 100 people attend and more when we have special speakers. I think last week, we had, you know, maybe a handful, and Chairwoman Bell will remember better than I will, maybe five, three or five different commissioners appear. And we use that as a, as a, as a working group where we, you know, have Guide House come in, you know, use breakout sessions, because we have so many people, and we use a really wonderful platform that Guide House provides that does a lot of note-taking, a lot of discussions, and really facilitates different ideas of different issues in the community that we want to attack. The governor has recently, earlier this week, come out with a list of buckets, or a list of ideas and priorities that she wants to put the funds towards. They include things like small businesses, access to capital, startups, small business attraction and tech and mobility, broadband, you know, green spaces, climate change, behavioral health, and a lot on early childhood education. Those are just some of the things that I think the governor is at least publicly saying that, that they intend to prioritize some of their funds for. Couple of things to keep in mind, as I've had a lot of these discussions before I turn it over to Guide House. We want to hear all your thoughts and all your ideas. You know, Huey, myself, and Guide House are going to be here taking copious notes about all of your requests. I think what we have found throughout this process is that there is a real opportunity to leverage funds. You know, if Wayne County, you know, the entire state of Michigan is getting about $18 billion in total through different entities, through different avenues. You know, Wayne County is getting $339 million, and that, and that provides us with a real opportunity to maybe come together and attack real longstanding problems. So think about that as you're thinking about this. And the other thing I would say is, you know, this is a one-time influx of funding. And so, you know, you know, we've heard a lot of ideas, a lot of requests, you know, and oftentimes, those ideas will require, you know, annual funding increases, which always presents long-term problems. And we've been so good about managing our finances here. I want folks to just keep those kinds of things in the back of your minds as, as, as you're suggesting things. So with that said, we do have a presentation from Guide House, and then we hope to hear today from commissioners about ideas and ways in which these funds can be deployed. So I'm going to introduce Jeff Bankowski, and Jeff can take it from here and introduce the team from Guide House.
Great. Thanks, Khalil. Good morning, everyone.
Great. Thanks, Khalil. Good morning, everyone. I'm Jeff Bankowski, Guide House's Michigan market partner. And on behalf of Guide House and our teaming partner, Pierce Monroe and Associates, thank you for hosting us today. To set the stage, I wanted to provide just a quick agenda. We plan to do quick introductions, then have Jeff Myers, one of our national funding leads, discuss the American Rescue Plan, as well as impacts on Wayne County. From there, we'll have Phil Pierce provide some funding detail and insights on the 43 Wayne County communities. And then Gabby Bryant will share a potential governance model that we're leveraging across many of our clients across the country with respect to the American Rescue Plan. Regarding introductions, as I said, I'm Jeff. I'm based in Detroit. I lead all of our state and local government work in Michigan as well as Ohio. And I'm also the engagement partner for the COVID response work for Wayne County, Oakland County, Detroit, City of Dayton, and the state of Michigan. I'll pass it off to my colleague, Phil Pierce.
Good morning, Commissioners and others who are on the Zoom call. I'm Phil Pierce, the managing member of Pierce Monroe and Associates. We've been in business for more than 35 years and have provided various consulting services to Wayne County for more than 30 years. And we specialize in servicing governmental agencies. Thank you.
Jeff Myers.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Myers. I'm a Director at Guide House in the healthcare segment. I've been with the firm a little over a year after serving as Commissioner of Health and Human Services for the state of New Hampshire. I'm an attorney by training and have been a lot of experience and work in the federal regulatory area over the course of my career. And in my time at Guide House, I've been very involved in the firm's assistance to states, local governments, and providers with respect to the COVID crisis. Thank you, and it's good to be with you today.
Great. And Gabby Bryant?
Hi, my name is Gabby Bryant. Born and raised in Wayne County, so love, you know, working with the county. I'm the project manager for the Wayne County COVID Response Project. We've been working very closely with Khalil and Huey and the judge and so many different components of Wayne County in order to make sure that we're responding, like being compliant and also making sure that we're taking advantage of all of the opportunities that the county has with the dollars available. We're really excited to continue this work. And I'm gonna pass it back over to Jeff Bankowski to get us started with the presentation.
Great. If we can move to Slide 3. You know, I just wanted to provide a little, just kind of context on where our perspective is being shaped. Guide House is headquartered just outside of Washington DC with our Michigan offices in Detroit at 1001 Woodward. We have over 8,000 employees, including our team from with Pierce Monroe. We're engaged across the country with numerous states, counties, cities, tribal governments, as well as healthcare systems. We have been advising since last year some of the largest counties on COVID-19 response, including Cook County in Chicago, Harris County in Houston, with Houston, as well as Oakland County. You can see there, if you just look at our Michigan Mitten, we lead similar work to this for the city of Detroit, Oakland County, multiple local health systems, as well as leading the compliance function for the state, for the state of Michigan. We believe these engagements can bring a keen insight and perspectives for the county, as well as when we think about it from a, from a regional perspective. But that as a backdrop, I want to flip it over to my colleague, Jeff Myers, to go into detail on the American Rescue Plan, if we can move to page four.
Thanks, Jeff. So I'm sure everyone on the call has heard something about the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, $1.9 trillion COVID Relief and Economic Recovery Act as well. I'm gonna provide, you know, some high-level overviews of various aspects of it. I'm gonna talk a bit about how it's gonna impact Wayne County in particular. And I'm also gonna provide some information, as Khalil mentioned, on the Biden Administration's proposed American Jobs Bill as well. Because as you're thinking about how you coordinate and manage the money coming from this American Rescue Plan Act, you know, you may want to keep in mind what may be coming. It's not, it's not done yet. It's not definite yet. But it's certainly gonna be a significant effort by the administration to pass a second bill that addresses infrastructure. So as you can see from this slide, the American Rescue Plan Act really touches every aspect of the American economy, from public health and COVID relief, obviously, you know, funding, billions of funding for vaccines and contract tracing, surveillance efforts and so forth, COVID response, money to increase healthcare coverage under the Affordable Care Act, a lot of money for education, the individual recovery rebates. That's the $1,400 checks that went out to Americans over the last number of weeks. That was over $394 billion itself. There's a significant amount of housing money. We're gonna talk about some of that today, tax credits. And we're gonna start by focusing on the state and local aid. So Gabby, if you could, or whoever is controlling the presentation, move to the next slide. Yeah. So this is a little bit of drill down information on some of those items. You can see in the upper left, the state tribal and territorial fiscal relief, that's that $219 billion. That's where Wayne County's $329 million is coming from. There are, there's education aid is listed here. The public health programs are listed here. Infrastructure in terms of addition, some federal transit, over $30 billion in federal transit funds. That money is gonna be going to the states. The additional FEMA money, over $50 billion to FEMA to ensure that it can respond, including to, you know, vaccine-related costs, you know, in Michigan and in Wayne County. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Emergency rental assistance, homeowners assistance, homelessness assistance. Those are all programs that were funded, as well as some small business programs as well that I'm gonna go into in a little bit more detail, including the PPP Payroll Protection Program, emergency injury development loans from the SBA, a new restaurant revitalization fund that's gonna be run by the SBA. And importantly, you know, a pilot program called the Community Navigator Pilot, which is gonna take $100 million and ensure that state and local governments are able to communicate with businesses and individuals in their communities and areas so that they are aware of all of the funding opportunities under this bill. So if you could move to the next slide. So here's the state, I'm gonna talk about the state and local funding, the $339 million that Wayne County is gonna be getting. And a few points to make, as Khalil was saying, the first tranche of money, which is 50%, is actually coming soon. We heard yesterday that it will be dispersed on May 10 to all counties that are political subdivisions. So Wayne County should be getting that 50% of the 339 on May 10. The second distribution of money, the second tranche, is scheduled to be done on or about March 11 of 2022. So that's the timeline. And, you know, looking at the uses of the money here, there's four uses. This is what's mentioned in the statute. As Khalil was saying, there's guidance that's coming. And in fact, we learned this morning that the U.S. Treasury Department is targeting April 26 as the date at which it's gonna issue some guidance. They may not make that date. That's the date they're aiming for and targeting. You know, the government can be, you know, can be a little bit late sometimes, as you all know, federal government, that is. So, but we're looking forward to that, and hopefully that will fill in some details. But there are four essential purposes of the state and local funding that Wayne County is getting, and they're all broad. First is to respond to the COVID health emergency and its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small business, nonprofits, or to aid impacted industries like tourism, travel, and hospitalities. There is an opportunity to provide additional pay to workers performing what's called essential work that is responding to the healthcare emergency and keeping the operations of government going so that it can respond to the pandemic on an ongoing basis. That includes what's called premium pay to eligible workers. So, you know, first responders, healthcare workers. Premium pay is defined in the statute as $13 an hour on top of the normal wages. So whatever the state and local workers, the county workers in this example, are making, they can be paid up to $13 more per hour to a cap of $25,000 during the public health emergency. So the county can increase the pay of workers responding to the COVID pandemic up to $13 an hour, but only to the cap of $25,000 per worker during the course of the pandemic. There is a provision, as I'm sure many of you have heard, to use this money to revenue replacement based on the revenues collected and appropriated in the prior fiscal year. We fully expect that hopefully Treasury will issue some guidance on this to make sure that it's clear how this revenue replacement is gonna work. And then lastly, the money can be used for necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband. I'm gonna pause there because in the American Jobs Bill that the Biden Administration has issued a summary of and is pushing for, there's, as you'll see a little bit later in the presentation, there's over $100 billion for broadband. So there's a number of buckets where money is coming potentially for broadband. As you can see, you know, the states overall are getting $219.8 billion. The counties are getting $65 billion of that. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about some of the individual provisions. There's $7.25 billion for additional payroll protection program loans. Importantly, the deadline, in fact, I think the President signed the bill yesterday or on Monday, extending the deadline for application to this new round of PPP loans, had been March 31 under prior law, and he signed a bill that extended it to May 31 of this year. The Small Business Administration is coordinating the program, as many of you know. They just issued some guidance. When we circulate the presentation, there's a hyperlink here under this bullet. And if you click that hyperlink, you'll get connected directly to the guidance that's been issued. There's $1.25 billion for what's called the shuttered venue operators program. That's operators of movie theaters and other live venues. Those venues that have experienced a reduction of 25% or more in 2019, and of course, there are many of those, are eligible to apply for this stream of funding as well. There's additional $15 billion for the SBA's Economic Injury Disaster Loan. It's an emergency loan that SBA, program that SBA runs. And there's $5 billion that's targeted for those businesses that have been hardest hit. If you could advance to the next slide. There's also a restaurant revitalization fund, over $28 billion. So this is gonna provide money for businesses, food businesses that have lost money between February 15 of 2020 through December 31 of 2021. Really, literally, everything is eligible, from, you know, a food cart or a food truck to large restaurant chains. The grants are capped at $10 million to the business, $5 million per physical location. There's gotta be a certification. These are, these grants are for restaurants that are continuing to operate. It's intended to keep them in operation, so to keep that business sector in operation, you know, across the country. But, and so applicants will have to certify that those grants are needed due to the uncertainty of current economic conditions. The uses are very broad, payroll, rent, mortgages, utilities, maintenance, and actually purchase of food and beverages in order to keep those restaurants in operation. And then, as I mentioned at the outset, the $100 million for the Community Navigator Program. And this is gonna go to nonprofits and local governments to ensure that business owners and individuals really understand all of the opportunities under the American Rescue Plan. If you can, yes?
Jeff, Glenn Anderson, I just wanted to mention, it seems like we're behind one slide.
Oh, you shouldn't be seeing Slide 9 now.
Now it is.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thanks.
So I'm gonna mention this program specifically because it really touches Wayne County very directly and many counties across the country as well. It's called the Homes Investment Partnership Housing Program. The American Rescue Plan appropriated 4.0, almost $4.3 billion. This is a housing and urban development administered program. It's been in existence for a while. It provides grants to communities that can be used to basically assist individuals who are either homeless or at risk for homelessness. And the money can be used for building, buying, rehabilitating affordable housing, and direct rental assistance to low-income people. So this is a funding stream that is in addition to the $25 billion in emergency rental assistance that the Act also provides and that individuals can apply for on an individual basis. To Khalil's point, early on, you know, there are different funding streams that are eligible for use for different periods. The state and local money, the $339 million that Wayne County is getting can be used, as Khalil said, through December 31 of 2024. This particular home grant program, and HUD has now released information identifying that Wayne County is gonna receive, you know, about $10.3 million for this program, can be used through 2030. So that's a significant window of time which these funds can be used and provide relief in York County. Very significant. Now, I'm gonna mention this very quickly.
Quick question about clarification from your previous slide?
Sure, of course. Let's go back to Slide 9. Thank you.
Just a real quick clarification question. The $10 million, that would be in addition to the $339 that we already allocated.
That is correct, Commissioner. Madam Chair, that is absolutely correct. This is in addition to the $339.2 that Wayne County is scheduled to receive.
Thank you.
Yep. So here's an outline of the proposal that the Biden Administration has published. Now, it's not actually a bill yet. It's not committed to bill language. So there's no real specific language that can be reviewed at this point. It's a 25-page summary. It's publicly available. I assume many of you have seen it. We can certainly send it along to you so it can be distributed to everybody. And these are the areas of funding that is outlined. Obviously, this is subject to negotiation within the U.S. House, within the U.S. Senate, between the administration and the Congress. You know, the Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi, is hoping to get a bill introduced in the House, I think, by the end of May. It's the timing that she has talked about, at least thus far. And the hope is that it will then go through the House and into the Senate, and out of the Senate before the August recess. So it could, you know, obviously, timing is subject to change, but that's the rough schedule that is being talked about. $100 billion for workforce development, $300 billion for additional small business and manufacturing assistance, including, you know, community revitalization funding, additional $213 billion for public housing, including some clean energy and sustainability programs. You could go to Slide 11. $100 billion itself for clean energy. And I mentioned broadband. So again, this is yet another potential source for broadband buildout, $100 billion for local networks. And importantly, for York County and for many counties across the country, $111 billion for water systems to modernize drinking water, wastewater, stormwater. $45 billion targeted to eliminate lead content pipes through the EPA's Drinking Water Revolving Fund and so forth. So very significant program. If you go to Slide. And then here are the transportation categories that have been identified to date. Again, these are just proposed. Over $621 billion, you know, $25 billion for shovel-ready projects, $50 billion for local community to, for building up disaster resilience and protecting critical infrastructure, obviously very significant, $85 billion to upgrade and expand public transit systems, $17 billion for inland ports, waterways. You can go through the list, and we'll obviously make the presentation available to everybody. But a very significant investment in transportation infrastructure. And apparently... And apparently, the slide that is up there was, I think there's a problem with the platform, with Zoom, in terms of this slide coming through. Let me try to address it, and then I'll turn it back to Jeff Bankowski briefly to address it as well, if you'd like to. There's obviously been a very significant vaccine response in the state of Michigan, in Wayne County, obviously, in addition to across the country, with significant expenditures. There is money alloc, there's about seventy-two million that has been preliminary allocated through FEMA in order to, you know, reimburse and pay for the vaccine response within Wayne County. There's total allocation, as you can see, of over seventy-six million dollars. On the right-hand side of the slide, you would have seen a series of smaller grants that also can be accessed or are anticipated to be accessed in order to cover the cost of vaccine distribution, administration, and so forth. And so Jeff, I don't know if you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, just to add on to Jeff's commentary, so, you know, the, and when the, when the slides come over, you know, the, in both PDFs that, you know, the, and be eligible. But as we indicated, the, the Guide House team has been supporting the county and, in the vaccination, you know, effort. And the large amount of the funding that has, you know, the, that we've already put in, in expediated application with FEMA is obviously for, for the vaccines, and that's roughly seventy-two point one million. And those other smaller categories, categories, we've been working with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services on, on, on state cascaded vaccination grants. And so those are already in process and have been applied for and captured by the county. So when you look at that total vaccine allocation, those are seventy-six point six million of funds that have been already captured by the county.
And so now I'd like to pass it to our colleague, Phil Pierce, to talk about the funding that's, more about funding that's coming to Wayne County and surrounding communities. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. This slide serves to drill down to the funding that's anticipated to be received by Wayne County and the local units of government within Wayne County. The appropriations are based on a formula that considers population growth, poverty, and housing overcrowding. It's, if you look at the numbers there for the cities within Wayne County, including Detroit, we're projecting approximately a little over one point one billion. If you add in Wayne County, it aggregates to about almost one point five billion. So this serves to depict the enormity of the funding that will be coming to our communities within Wayne County. And it also serves to underscore that this is generational in nature inasmuch that it's once-in-a-lifetime funding. And it provides for substantial opportunities for program coordination within the, I think there are about forty-three-plus counties, but local units of government within the county. And I'm sure we've worked, our firm has worked with more than twenty-plus of those communities. And I've chatted with several here before, and they're no doubt anxious to coordinate with Wayne County and leverage the funds in a substantial fashion. We move to the next slide. This slide serves to summarize some potential opportunities, if you will, in terms of how the funding could be utilized. On April the ninth, the Guide House PMA team facilitated a listening session with eighty-plus stakeholders representing different sectors as it relates to small businesses, community development, mobility and technology, workforce development, and retention, equity, and inclusion. While there were several topics that were discussed, there were some common themes, if you will, across the groups, such as reducing barriers to entering the market for both business owners and workers by supporting minorities, increasing access to capital, job training, children support, accessible transportation as a means to increase equity, allow employment flexibility and boost talent attraction, digital inclusion through increased access, the ability to broadband, support for community spaces such as parks and bike lanes, safe drinking water and lead service line replacement across the county, collaboration across sectors to promote the best outcomes for Wayne County. And I'm sure that with further discussion among the commissioners and their constituencies, this list will no doubt expand. At this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Gabby Bryant.
Thanks, so, and thank you too for the commissioners who participated in that listening session. It was a really great chance for us to hear from the community and to hear from a couple of you who were able to join that Friday session. And like Khalil mentioned earlier on, we'll be continuing those. And that we really look forward to kind of continuing this collaboration. And this brings me right to this slide, which is kind of a snapshot of a proposed governance model. We understand that, you know, this is a huge opportunity for the county, and it's a huge opportunity for the municipalities within the county as well. Because we're going to, if this is done properly and done the right way, we can have a multiplicative effect of the dollars that are coming into the county and making sure that we are leveraging the opportunity as best we can to have a very big impact on the county and its municipalities. So as you can see here, we've outlined a couple of major stakeholders, of course, with Wayne County being at the center of it, but having a very open and transparent communication with Wayne County Commission, making sure that there is coordination happening at the state level. But also too, this is a really great chance to partner with philanthropic and nonprofit community partners to access additional dollars. A lot of the work that they are doing is going to really coalesce the, the outcomes and the goals that the county is going to set for itself. And then, of course, Guide House will be here, Guide House PMA will be here to go ahead and support and make sure that all of the spending is compliant and that we're thinking about it from a strategic way. So really using those dollars as effectively as possible by focusing in on when there is a higher level of restriction on the dollars, we'll use those dollars first. And then if there is a little bit more lax restriction on those, on additional dollars, we'll be able to use those for additional plans and additional programs that the county might want to pursue, but maybe don't fit in as neatly into a different project. So we also are really encouraging the county in the listening sessions as well to take this as an opportunity to envision the outcome. So really taking the time to think about where the county wants to be in five years. And we think that by having this kind of collaborative and transparent relationship with all of these entities, we're going to really have, think about what the county of the future could look like with such a great opportunity of so many dollars coming in, and an opportunity to really have some time to think about this strategically because we have until the end of December, twenty-four, to spend all of this money. So with that, I'll hand it off with, to Jeff Bankowski for any final remarks, and then open it up to questions.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, thanks Gabby. You know, on behalf of the, you know, the Guide House PMA team, you know, we're excited to continue to, to be, you know, working with the county. And I'll flip it over to Khalil for, to, for closing comments and to open up for a question and answer.
I think, I think we're, we're ready. I just, you know, it, once again, you know, I want to remind everybody that the purpose of the funds, at least part of the purpose of the funds was to handle revenue losses. We're still in the process of figuring out, you know, over the next three years, what that might look like because the last thing we want to do is to compromise on service. So I think, you know, for us, you know, we're not thinking to ourselves, we have to be in a rush right now. We did a really great job spending the CARES Act dollars in time, you know, and sure enough, the, the day before the, the New Year, they, they changed the rules on us. But, but we did a really, really good job of spending a lot of dollars very, very quickly in a very, very appropriate way. So I've got a lot of confidence in the team. But that being said, we want to be strategic, we want to be methodical about how we do this.
Thank you so much, thank you for that presentation. Hopefully, we can get a copy of that for all commissioners to look over, that would be very helpful. I see a few hands right now, so I'll turn it over, it looks like, to Commissioner Maricki.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just had a couple of questions to start off with. The chart that you showed with the cities getting monies, those are not part of our three hundred and thirty-nine million, right? They're getting their own, their own monies with that?
Yes, each community is getting an allocation.
Yes, and Khalil, do you know, I, I'm looking, just looking and comparing city sizes. I know there's different things that go into this, but is there some kind of list that shows what goes into the decisions of how much money each city or township receives? You know, I mean, how do they determine that, I guess?
Yeah.
When, when LaBoni gets eight million and Dearborn gets forty-eight million, and they're the same size. And I know there's some differences, but I'm just wondering when I talk to my leadership.
Right, Jeff, I thought that they used the, some of the HUD percentage allocations. So there's a lot of formula issues with it, right?
Right. Oh, right Khalil, as, as, the, and it's all publicly available for all of the, the counties and the cities and non-eligible entities across the United States. So the Department of Treasury created, used it off of what's called the CDBG Modified Formula, and then made adjustments based off of, of poverty, you know, the, and, you know, the, and so you can see there were, you know, a, a large adjustments for, for, for certain entities. So it's got a population component, a variety of the, but Commissioner, if you would need any kind of background for constituents, we can provide a, a little talking points and write up for you on how the allocation worked.
Okay, you know what, I would really appreciate that, just talking to my mayors and supervisors, just to, to show them. I would appreciate that. And I guess, I haven't talked to my leadership yet. We saw this presentation last week in Ways and Means, but I would just appreciate, like, starting points. This is so overwhelming, these monies, that just when we go to our mayors and supervisors, asking them, you know, kind of what their wish list would be, just some kind of guidance on even how to start that conversation and talk to them. Because I don't even know where to start with this, it's so, there's so much money here.
I mean, we can help with that, for sure.
Okay, all right, I think that's, I hit, one more thing. So when, when our, all this money is going to be still monitored through this group, even when it goes into the other city projects or township projects, all of this is still going to be monitored, correct?
Yeah, to the county will definitely be monitored. How cities and municipalities decide to spend their money, though, that will be something that we'll have to kind of keep open communication. And that's what our hope to do is with a lot of these listening sessions, with coming up with a strategy that's cohesive and collaborative, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have right now, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I think that's important about the allocation part. Because when I looked at the different municipalities and saw such different amounts going to each one of them, I wondered what formula was used to come up with those dollars. So I'll be interested in getting that, maybe you can share that for all commissioners, so we can have those talking points. And that's direct to Guide House. I would like to now go to have a list here, Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that was one of my questions as well, how the formula worked for the, for each community. So yes, I would be interested in getting that as well. And as far as the home rental assistance programs that you described, I didn't really get a feel that there were any monies being allocated for tax assistance for those who are currently in their homes and ensuring that we can stabilize home ownerships in our, in, in our community. And so I would like to see that some of those dollars be used for that. And, and again, I wasn't really sure if that was a part of what, what you described. Is there someone that can clarify that?
Thanks, thanks for the, the question, Commissioner. We can put together an analysis, there's so many different variety of aspects around rental and also mortgage assistance, just to bring kind of clarity. The second Consolidated Appropriation Act that was executed at the end of December provided a large rental assistance program that the state of Michigan is facilitating. And so there's going to be a variety of different additional supplemental tranches that were, because that didn't include anything but mortgage and stuff. So we can put together an analysis for you. But I think in general, these uses are a lot more flexible, and there's a variety of different, you know, kind of specific components. So, you know, the, so we can get back to you with kind of a, a deep dive of analysis of that.
Yes, because I would really want to look at, and I'm quite sure most commissioners want to stabilize home ownership in their communities and ensure that people don't lose their homes due to taxes and or, you know, assistance just with paying their mortgage. The other thing that I would like to see are, as people stayed at home because of COVID and, and are working from home, there has been an uptick in the amount of trash. I started an initiative called the War on Trash. And we've discussed in many of our meetings constituents' concerns about all the trash in the neighborhoods. And, and we know that where there's more trash, there's more crime. It's, it's correlated. And so because of that, I would, would really want to see that we can help the municipalities with cleanup efforts, helping community organizations with cleanup efforts. So if there could be a block of dollars that each commissioner received to allocate to their community groups for cleanup efforts. And I'm not really sure where that exactly would fit in, but that would be a suggestion that I would have, that each commissioner gets a certain pool of dollars to help those community organizations, block clubs, with various cleanup efforts. And, and then for our seniors, emergency home repairs, I'm not sure that, that those dollars that you talked about for rental assistance, again, if we could break out some, some dollars for each commissioner to help with seniors in their community that have issues related to home repairs. Again, this is against stabilizing our neighborhoods. And I think that, that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. And I would also ask if all commissioners could put in writing your concerns so we can compile a, a list and have everything in writing. That would be helpful as we go through what the dollars can be spent on, and they'll have our recommendations. So that would be very helpful. If anyone could email me all of the different items that they would like to see the money spent on. Commissioner Dobbs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so my ideas on how to use this money, and I don't know if any of my ideas are within the guidelines, or some of them might fall under the American Jobs Plan. So the first thing is to put some money into our infrastructure for drainage. I know my district has, in Canton, we have several areas that are under the Board of Determination for flooding and erosion for their creeks and drainage districts. And it's going to cost the people who live there, the taxpayers, a bit of money to get those fixed. And I know that many of the other commissioners experience flooding in their districts. In Dearborn, Detroit, especially these past couple of years, we have these heavy rainfalls. We just get these terrible flooding issues. So I would love to see some money put into the infrastructure to improve our stormwater management and our drainage infrastructure. And again, I don't know if that's going to go under the American Jobs Plan, but I'd like to see that. Another idea I would like to see is electric vehicle charging infrastructure in our county. Electric vehicles are coming. They are going to be more popular in the future. I do see that listed under the American Jobs Plan as part of the jobs. I don't know, it's in there somewhere. But so I don't know if there, if we want to build upon that with the American Rescue Plan, but I'd love to see Wayne County be, you know, a hub for electric vehicles. And then another idea, I don't know if this is, would be in the guidelines, is that to increase salaries within the county, county employees. You know, we've talked about that in so many of our departments, that we've had trouble hiring. We've had trouble keeping employees. I'd love to see some of those entry level and mid-level positions get a salary boost, and so we can attract and keep talent. I'm sorry, I'm going through my notes here. I'm kind of out of order. And then one other thing, oh, one other thing, is I was part of a small business listening tour the other week with my two state representatives, and some of the small business owners said that they really liked the marketing and advertising campaign that we did around the holiday season, the shop in Wayne County. But we felt that they didn't get a lot of response from it, but they would love to participate in one if we were to offer them some free advertising, marketing in the future, if it was a little bit more robust. And I know that, you know, we did that around holiday season, and then we were kind of rushing to spend those dollars because we thought we had a deadline. But if we could maybe build something out that was a little bit more robust and help out our small businesses by providing free marketing and advertising, I would love to see that. And also, money for major road projects. Again, I don't know if that's going to come from the American Rescue Plan or the Jobs Plan, but we have lots of roads to fix. Those are my ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will remind commissioners to put your ideas in writing as opposed to listing them all out today. Because I know we all have at least 10 ideas each that we want to express, so we can put those in writing. That would be helpful. Are there any questions? And I'll go down my list. Commissioner Basham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, some of this money is for public safety, correct? Say, Khalil?
I believe some of it can be used.
Okay. That was, I believe so, but that's close to, yes. You know, this benefits the whole county. It's not even in my district. But the Marine Patrol, I'm going back to it, in Wayne County, actually goes out and picks up bodies. If you fall in a river, jump in a river in Belle Isle, or Ecorse, or Wyandotte, they are located, and Wayne County owns the park. It's in Trenton, it's Elizabeth Park, at the south end. We're now funding the money to do the docks finally, but the establishment that those guys are in that have to keep their gear there is pathetic. I've got a list of what it's going to cost to completely upgrade that. It's $189,793. You know, that should be doable. If you've got the specifics, and I do, then why can't we move forward with something like that? Any, and I know Commissioner Badun has been out there with me, but if commissioners want to go to that with me, I can arrange that. But we should, we should look at how we treat our employees and what kind of conditions it's in. And sometimes you can't save costs by just not funding a project. And so this is very, very important to me, as it's important to everybody that cares about, that cares about people that actually fall in a river or whatever. They do a lot more than just pick up bodies. But the point is, it's something that Wayne County is responsible for. I'm responsible for it, in a sense. And I just wanted to advocate for those guys that can't advocate for themselves. So anyway, I just think it's important. And anyway, I wanted to make, and my other things, I will just list them and turn them into the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the Marine, please, if you could forward that to Commissioner Varga for discussion in Ways and Means, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Also, I would like to take you up on that offer, Commissioner Basham.
Go out there.
It's on, it's on.
Thank you. Commissioner Badun?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will start off by agreeing with what Commissioner Basham said about the Marine Patrol. I did witness, and I saw on the tour, the condition of that building. I think they do need to build a different structure there. Several of the commissioners touched on the areas that I would also support. Housing, housing is a big deal for me. I think several of the communities, the cities in Wayne County, they have abundance of vacant land. I think we should probably meet with our mayors and see if they can build affordable homes, housing for those are income-eligible, based on the poverty level. That's one area. Also, I'd like to see something that could be done to help more the homeless people. As far as the flooding, it's been a major issue in Down River with the Ecorse Creek. City of Dearborn Heights gets devastated, South Dearborn Heights, every, every once in a while. That's Commissioner Kinesik's district, but being a real estate broker, I have seen the effect of the flooding that happens. Also, it goes to Taylor and a lot of the Down River areas. So something that could be done about the Ecorse Creek to eliminate the flooding in that area, that's a good way to spend some of this money. But I have a question, Khalil. I don't know if Khalil can answer this. In Dearborn, we have what we call combined sewer overflow. We've been paying for this for a while. Could some of this money be used to pay down on an old debt that was federally mandated, that we needed to do it, Khalil?
You know, again, the guidance hasn't come out on it, but I know one rule that has come out is that the money should not be used on, help me out, Jeff, is it old pension obligations or other old liabilities?
Right. Khalil, there's two things that it's not allowable, is pensions and tax reduction, so.
Okay. All right. This is what I have. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Haydous. Thank Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. It looked to me like we have a many similar problem in our communities in Wayne County. But in my district, I have three township, and township, it's really different than city. Depend on the county for more services than the cities. And in the past, in my district, been a problem caused by the growth in some community where it's rural area, they build large subdivision, and all the road is still dirt road. And some area, the people can't afford the assessment because the practice in the state of Michigan in Wayne County, if we pave the road, we assess the cost to the property owner around it. And many of those area, they have a low-income people. They are a little bit above the poverty line and less. Can we use some of those money? Because if we use federal money to pave the road, we don't have to assess it to the people. So the question is, can some of those money be used to pave some of the dirt road where the traffic increase, and we have a school bus route, ambulance, the first responding, use those dirt road? So can some of those money used for enhance the dirt road and some of the township? And the same problem that Commissioner Dobbs mentioned, the flooding, and my area too, as the county know, we've been responding, the county respond, in fact, reroute some of the ditches. But we need to have a permanent solution for the flood issue, too. So we want to know, because here the president mentioned is going to have the infrastructure fund coming in. Is some of the money the county have, we need to use it, like I mentioned on road flooding, those fell under the infrastructure structure? Or we could use some of this fund we have now? So there are many of technicalities, many similar issue in municipalities. We need to work on what can we use this fund for, and what we expect from the different fund that the president mentioned for the infrastructure. So those question and technicality, and I will submit my list to you, Madam Chair, and hope to work with the county to resolve some of those problems we've been lived with for a few years, as fact, since I've been elected. Because we, we're not failing to do the job, but we don't have the mean and the money to do the job. And now we have a big chunk of money. I hope we could work out and see what we are, what we allowed to do under those restrictions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Very good points. We appreciate that, and I'm sure the administration will get back with you with a lot of money because and on what. Thank you. Commissioner Anderson, then Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted, I guess, an overview question, or how will this, the approval process on these projects, once they come through? They will come to committee, right, to Ways and Means and to the full commission for approval before the money is spent, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And that process will be submitting the proposals, then the commission taking it up in committee, and then through the full board?
Again, we plan on following the procurement process.
I know, I know you had some time limits, time restrictions before, and we had to work together to try to make sure that money was used. And, but we're looking now at a longer timeframe, and so I'm just hoping that it'll...
Just as I answered the question, that Ways and Means, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We've never done this before. Emergencies pop up. We utilize the procurement ordinance, which is, you know, again, an ordinance that we are allowed to utilize, and we will abide by accordingly.
Also, the, I guess, I know Commissioner Dobbs had mentioned, and I think somebody else may have also, infrastructure is one of the most important things to me, and I realize what you have said previously, that the next legislation may be more restrictive, and it may be the better use of those dollars for infrastructure. But I just want to make sure that we try to do what we've been unable to do with the funding on our roads and our bridges, and get those in good shape. It's something that's, of course, a safety issue for all of our citizens. And additionally, something that I would like to see, and I will put this in writing, that sidewalks on county land that is adjacent to residential areas to complete those sidewalks. So we are able to, to get the, so we've been making a real effort, I think, to provide access, accessible areas for people to walk, and connectivity between parks and open land so people can exercise, can ride their bikes, whatever. So I'd like to see us keep that in mind, too. But I will submit something, and basically, that's all I have this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I had mentioned before, Khalid, I'm looking at you about the lead and stuff. I have all of these older homes in Hamtramck and Highland Park. And I need to be able to sit down with somebody to see how we're able to use these dollars. I just got a list from my treasure that so many is in potential foreclosure in that. So I need a lot, a lot of help. And just following up on Commissioner Monique Baker, everything that she said, I need some help there. Just this weekend, on the 24th, my community in Highland Park is starting a cleanup. Because people find that these older cities, they come through and they dump and stuff, and, you know, litter, you know, it's just awful. But I've called the county. I haven't been able to see if there's anything that the county can help me with, you know. I'll have to go into my own pocket and, you know, and get some bags and help with the cleanup and stuff if I can't get some help. So it's so much that I need, that if I could just sit down with somebody and see how I can start. And when can we start using these dollars that you're talking about now?
Well, we don't have the funds yet. Jeff mentioned that the guidance on the on the 26th or 28th of this month, later this month sometime, we'll decipher those funds for sure. The more information comes out every day on the American Jobs Plan Act. And I just, like I said to everybody, you know, I think, you know, I think everything everybody is saying is really important, very high priority. I also think there are other opportunities for us to leverage other funds to accomplish some of these things. I think some of the things that folks have mentioned, I have heard are buckets of interest that I think the governor's office is interested in, heard $5.9 billion. I think local municipalities who are also getting a direct allocation, so understand that, you know, I think what we're trying to do right now is just sort of getting a level of understanding what folks' interests are. We will do the best that we can from a matchmaking standpoint of where the appropriate funds is, if it's in the American Jobs Plan or the American Rescue Plan, or if the governor's office has a plan, or the locals, you know, money is appropriate, or our HUD dollar is appropriate. And, you know, I can't tell you when the appropriate time that this will all come together. I feel we've been very hard on this over the summer, and, you know, I, my fear is, my fear is this, if we come out with a plan too fast, and sure enough, you know, the American Jobs Plan comes out where, you know, would have solved a problem. I don't want to go down the road too far without strategizing. And so I think, you know, my guess is, you know, over the, towards the end of the summer, we'll have a much more detailed, like, vision of how we want to use it. And we have, and we have three years, right? We have, you know, we have time.
All right. Because I want to be able to, as Commissioner Baker mentioned about stabilizing the homes that we have here. I have some beautiful old homes, but people don't have the dollars in that to maintain them. So I just want to be able to sit... So I I just want to be able to sit down with somebody and see how that I can approach all of this stuff. I mean, it's monumental. But if I can get some help on that, I would certainly appreciate it.
Who can she talk to now about this weekend? Who who um can help with this cleanup for Commissioner Scott?
Madam Chair, Andrew Candrevis from CEO's office, I will talk to Commissioner Scott today.
Thank you.
And Andy, I think directing her with Terry Carroll is a good start.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes, Madam Chair, I've submitted to you in a rough sketch and outline of some of my uh some of my thoughts. Um, I just wanted to say uh here that um I know with the recovery as well as a number of other deals making its way through Congress, that the President is trying to address um uh poverty. And I uh hope that many of uh much of the money that's coming in, uh, I know this is an an uh an immediate influx of funds to deal with the causes and the after effects of from the pandemic that's creating um individuals um not being paid their mortgages and rent and whatnot. But I hope that we can find ways uh to utilize the money that one, it makes individuals financially stronger on the other on the other side. If we can um both with um creating uh economically accessible um funding for um housing options. Because I I hear a lot about dealing with back rent, dealing with mortgages like. But uh want us to talk about ways that we can actually um uh create programs for homeownership. Um, ways that we um can deal with those us um uh business uh segments and or individuals in particular, black folks in um in Wayne County who don't have necessarily the uh easy access to funding to shore up some of the um sure, to shore up some of the um financial issues and lack of ability to gain access to resources. Uh, I think it's um and 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 inside of my um suggestions is is to, you know, not only deal with uh the, you know, like I said, the black businesses that have um had uh serious trouble in being able to identify loans from banks and grants and other things. Uh, but also just local small businesses across uh Wayne County that we're able to um create programs, whether it's with uh our money alone or partnering, like you said, uh with some other uh funds that may be available or some other foundations. Um, but I want this money hopefully to make people stronger on the other side and be able to have something that it will be able to um be sustainable, that they'll be able to um not just have to depend on, you know, uh, dealing with the back losses, but also being able to uh strengthen their business, strengthen their homes um where it will begin to grow for them and and uh as an asset on the other side.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have two more Commissioners on this topic and we do have two more items on the agenda. Commissioner Vice Chair Palomera.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Madam Chair. I have just a few questions. Uh, has the tax revenue losses from the fiscal year that ended September 30th of last year or the first half of this fiscal year been quantified yet? And I heard that they could be, that some of this new federal money could be used to replace that. Is that a dollar for dollar replacement or only a a portion of that could be replaced?
Um, I don't know the answer to whether or not uh.
Khalil, if I, yeah, if I may, so I I think it's a dollar for dollar, but I do want to be clear that it's still not clear to us exactly what even the baseline would be, right? So I mean, is it is the baseline pre-COVID, is the baseline what we put into the budget? So trust me when I say it's something I'm very um, I'm looking forward to understanding in very deep detail exactly what that looks like. And that's a very good question to ask, it's just not, we're not clear yet on it, on what the baseline looks like or if it's going to be dollar for dollar. We anticipate it to be dollar for dollar, but there's more guidance coming out on that. Jeff, I'll concede to you if I, if there's anything more you want to add or any updates that I'm not aware of.
Um, yeah, no, I think it's a great question. And to me, and I, we know for a fact that both uh the Government Finance Officer Organization, both GFOA and NGA, put that specific question um into Treasury. And so I think that'll be one of the first ones that will come out uh in the guidance is the establishment around revenue replacement in both methodology and the baseline as well as it can, will it have to be on an aggregate basis, all revenue? Or can it be handled on individual line um specifics? Because those could come to two different conclusions. So I I I think the uh the guidance should be coming here within the next four to four to six weeks.
But I I I do think that um, Mr. Commissioner, you you have pointed out the single, you know, sort of initial most difficult question for us to anticipate with, you know, what's the possibility of how much revenue loss we may have over the next three years? You know, coming out of a pandemic we've never really experienced before. And so that's that's a question that, trust me, the team is struggling with, you know, every day.
Well, and and just as a follow up to that, who will be able to quantify that and how do you quantify that?
Well, we um, we do talk to the Treasurer's Office, the University of Michigan's Research and Forecasting Team is a a an entity that the city of Detroit, uh Oakland County and others use. Uh, and, you know, we make the best educated guess that we can. We 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 follow the the amount of assistance that's out there. We follow the, we follow the amount of collections and the rate that it's at. And and we, just like every year where Scott Vandermeel comes in and helps with figuring out assessments and so on and so forth. And and we make the best educated guess we can get.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair. That's it for now.
Thank you. Final question goes to Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Uh, I was just going to uh ask that I attend that meeting with Commissioner Scott. With Candrevis, you you said you were gonna meet with her, I would like to meet as well. And also to the point that uh Commissioner Palomera just made, I think that's why it's important for us to uh help those that are that need assistance with taxes so that they can pay their taxes, which then we would get paid. So so um, that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That's a good segue. Let me first thank Night House for uh joining us today and for this information. We are going to get a copy of this slide for us to have. And then please, everyone, if you could uh jot down your suggestions. What I think I'm going to do is assign someone from Pam Shop to work with each Commissioner to collect all of your ideas. And then we can put them in different categorical buckets that we can then share with the administration um so that we can keep everything uh neat and um I know where everyone is at, once we get that, we'll share with everyone so we can all know where we are as a commission. These commissioners give an input as to uh how we should spend those dollars. Uh, thank you again at Night House for that. And before you go, um, there was one question I wanted to just emphasize with the essential worker piece. Um, there was a question asked by our Ask Me Union about what's an essential worker? And I believe the responsible that the Treasury is uh doing that definition so that we can make sure that all of our Wayne County essential workers are getting um those dollars um that they should get of the hard work that they've been doing during this pandemic. So we'll make sure that that gets addressed as well in this uh spending. So with that, I would like to really quick go over to uh Khalil to speak about uh real quick, you know, a couple of weeks ago, the Gilbert Foundation mentioned some dollars for Detroit back taxes. Um, the county executive then mentioned about $5 million to help the rest of the county. Um, Khalil, could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. And I think uh the point is timely, as Commissioner Baker McCormick mentioned. Uh, helping people with their taxes is very, very important. Some time ago, we were approached uh by Dan Gilbert's team to talk about philanthropic opportunities that are happening, uh, you know, in and around Detroit, in and around Wayne County. And certainly, over the years, we have been talking to them about tax foreclosure issues. You know, when we, in 2015, I think, the amount of foreclosures in Wayne County was like 28,000 foreclosures. I think before the pandemic, that number has gone down dramatically to the tune of 2,000 or 3,000 a year, uh, which is really, you know, a a great compliment to the Treasurer, a great compliment to um, you know, uh mayors and supervisors throughout Wayne County, a great compliment to the county executive and and the county commission. Um, I still think there's a lot of work to be done. There are now, you know, roughly 34,000 people, and I'm sure that number's a little off now, uh, on payment plans. And so certainly, it's still an issue that we have to deal with. In in conversations with Dan Gilbert, uh, this idea came up about paying off Detroiters back taxes. And many of you know, uh, maybe a year or two ago, year and a half ago, I can't even remember. We we worked really hard to negotiate both with the city of Detroit and the state legislature. Um, the Pay As You State program, which is a program that forgives uh the people's penalties, interest and fees if they qualify for the poverty exemption within their area and the poverty exemption being 100%, which the city of Detroit is i- is is 100% uh forgiveness uh if you meet the poverty threshold. Um, through that work, I think uh last year, about 5,500 people applied for the Pay As You State program. Um, the program is working, it it does very, very well. And so I think uh in discussions with Dan Gilbert, we came up with this idea where if people can further apply for this program, the Pay As You State program, Dan Gilbert will pay up $15 million to help pay off the principal of the rest of their back taxes, again, to keep people in their homes and to give them sort of a clean slate. Um, and that is a very uh, a very generous and and really a huge endeavor for for folks in city Detroit. I believe that that is going to help roughly about 20,000 homeowners if everybody who can comply applies. And so there's a lot of work to be done with that, there's a lot of outreach that needs to be done, so on and so forth. In addition to that, uh, you know, uh, the county executive announced that we would put up $5 million of our own funds to be able to carry some of the benefits of the things that we have seen with tax foreclosure prevention in the city of Detroit, outside the city of Detroit, where we don't see a a a lot of resources and still continue some of those things in the city. Um, and so uh the idea would be we would provide $5 million to Wayne Metro to administer three programs that we have seen work. One, uh, help spread the, you know, the 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 news and the administration of the Pay As You State program. Uh, there's only, I I don't know the exact number, but only a handful of communities in Wayne County that can even utilize the Pay As You State program because their local ordinances don't allow for it, they haven't adopted it, they don't have 100% And so some effort and outreach to those local municipalities to talk to them about the benefits of the program, how it's worked in the city, uh, how it's helped keep people in their homes and why their city should adopt it. Uh, portions of the money will go in that direction. Another uh, another third of it, and I don't know the exact breakup of the 5 million just yet, we're still working that out with Wayne Metro. But another point of the 5 million is to help provide legal advice for people who are facing eviction, which is a big problem. Uh, and then finally, um, uh, the last part of the program is to expand uh the Make It Home program. There is a significant problem in Wayne County where renters are paying the rent to homeowners who are not paying the taxes. And so renters then are subject to being evicted because of the foreclosure process. And so the Make It Home program, what it does is it allows the local municipality to exercise its right of refusal, okay, before the property goes to auction, and then provides that home to the renter, you know, and it helps assist the renter become a homeowner. And there's a whole process to it, and there's a whole education processes, financial education process to it. It's a program that um the Dan Gilbert uh Foundation, the the Gilbert Family Foundation Community Fund, I think it's called, uh, really exercises a ton in the city of Detroit. And and we want to take these programs and we want to expand them all throughout the county because we've seen them work especially in the area. So that's the high level of the program, uh, Madam Commissioner. When we present this, as we still want, we we have to, we have to come to the county commission for approval. We plan on bringing Wayne Metro with a lot more details of how to administer the program. We're still trying to identify the appropriate funds for that. You know, obviously, you know, since the American Rescue Plan has come out, there is housing dollars there. Uh, so maybe, maybe that's the most appropriate fund, but we are waiting for the guidance uh and such, so.
Thank you. One quick question from uh, two quick questions, it looks like, one from Commissioner Moretti, Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Khalil, just very quickly, so there is no thought of us taking $5 million out of general fund to pay anybody's back taxes?
Not to pay people's back taxes, I don't think that's.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, and second, again, you just mentioned this, but um, isn't there a possibility we don't have to take 5 million out of general fund since we're getting 339 million coming down the pipe? That we could use some of that money? I I I think that's what you were referring to when you see the guidelines.
Well, we're also getting 10 million of home dollars on top of 39. So and and then the American Jobs Plan also may have some, so the the question is, we don't know yet, but you're right.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we aren't paying back taxes with taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker McCormick? You're on mute?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I and I just wanted to clarify, um, you talked about the financial education uh that a renter would uh have to go through. Uh, it, does that also apply for homeowner assistance?
You know, we administer a few homeowner assistance programs through community action agencies. So I think Wayne Metro will probably be the best person to answer that when I do bring it to the commission. So I'm I'm happy to put it on the presentation radar.
Okay, yeah, I I think that would be a great idea that's attached to uh providing assistance that they uh, the homeowner has to go through some type of uh training or workshop or so maybe that won't happen again.
Got it.
Um, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask Khalil, I wanted to, uh, I guess the program sounds worthwhile, certainly exploring as far as uh the land, the part about landlords not paying the taxes or the owner not paying the taxes and people losing the house. We need to do what we can to help protect them from that. Uh, I would be cautious to the degree that there not be some type of a scam set up where they get the money to pay the taxes and the land or the owner still owns the house. And and so I would just urge caution uh that provisions are in that agreement or that understanding uh that they would have or that it would have to be something in writing, certainly, that they are um uh the county and the the taxpayers are protected, that's all.
Got it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Khalil, and we look forward to getting more information on uh this program. Thank you so much. All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number three is a presentation by Deputy County Executive Richard Kaufman and Chief Information Officer Carlos Perez on countywide information technology and document management.
Okay, this item came about through Commissioner Varga. Um, kind of the same vein of what we're talking about as far as expenditures, but uh there's much more that's going on in the realm of IT throughout the county and especially our document management system. So I wanted uh Mr. Kaufman and Perez to speak briefly about what the county is doing with this and what we expect going forward. Turn it over to you. Mr. Kaufman?
You sound on mute.
You're on mute.
Okay, I figured it out. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair Bell. Happy birthday, Irma. You haven't changed in 40 years. Nice to see the rest of the Commissioners and the Commission staff. Um, I knew exactly what I wanted to say until Madam Chair said brief. So now I'll cut three quarters of what I was going to say and try to give you the highlights. But on Tuesday, when I got the email from uh Commissioner Bell and I read Commissioner Varga's description of what she wanted, it really was an update on everything that's going on with our computer systems, which includes document management and what's going on now and what looks like the future. And frankly, when I got that and talked to Carlos, our attitude was thought you'd never ask. So we are excited, we are excited to be here because this is kind of a nuts and bolts thing that we don't think many people were interested other than Carlos and I and the teams we work with to accomplish what we think we're accomplishing in so many areas. So we're happy to be here and we will try not to bore you. Um, so uh, a few minutes ago, when I was getting ready to start the presentation, I I texted Carlos asking him to remind me how long he has been with the county. And he replied, I've been with the county four and a half years. I'm the longest serving CIO. I'm the longest serving CIO of Wayne County who has not gone to jail. So four and a, about five years ago, uh, as the new administration was coming into office, working with the commission to deal with a host of problems, uh, about a year, year and a half after that, we finally had some time and got around to figuring out, uh, what's the state of our, our county IT. And we hired a consultant, went in, looked at it, gave us a report, and it was really, really bad news. We frankly were on the verge of a complete destruction of our IT department with the most amazing consequences if we didn't fix it. We didn't know whether it was gonna crash the next day or in six months or in two years, but it was not gonna be more than two years. And so we went to work. And one of the things we did is we hired Carlos Perez. And in my opinion, anybody who will ever study the history of Wayne County's IT department will create a chapter that says before Carlos Perez and after Carlos Perez. Carlos quietly has transformed that department and has brought us from the state of disaster to so, so many improvements. The truth is, we're really not out of the woods yet. But the reason we're still in the woods is because a- a- as opposed to have crashed our entire system is because Carlos has done amazing improvements to that that when I finish talking, I will let him, uh, talk to, cause he knows about it much better than me. But just on a higher level, Carlos had major, major challenges. He had so many systems that we didn't have licenses anymore for. He had a county that was totally in silos with respect to IT. Each elected office had their own IT team. E- many of the departments in the executive branch did. And for good reason, they didn't, and to some extent, they still don't trust county IT for one very good reason. It wasn't an entity to be trusted before Carlos got there. So Carlos has worked hard to not just jump in like an elephant to say, I'm county IT. I'm taking over your stuff. One, that just never works. Carlos and the entire team down in Do-It, uh, Department of IT, which we call it, has been transformed. We have so many competent people down there. We have so many dedicated people down there, and they have been doing their best to, uh, work with the different IT divisions and the various departments and offices to combine what can be combined now, to look at the future and try to work together. It is a sizable task and Carlos and his team has made, uh, great progress. And I'll let him explain in more detail, uh, the projects he's worked on, the projects he's completed, the coordination that he has instituted with the other offices and department and where he sees the future. I just want to spend a few more minutes talking about the document management piece because that is a piece I know very, very well, and I am personally heading up trying to solve the disaster we created. For decades and decades, no one has undertaken a centralized plan to have a non-insane document management system. Other than a few small places in the county like the Third Circuit Court, and there's maybe one or two others, nobody has tried to methodically digitize our records, destroy the records that are old enough to destroy, and eventually get to a paperless system. And the problem became acute when the Criminal Justice Center is being built with storage based upon us having a state of the art document management system by the time we move those offices into the CJC because there's not a lot of storage places in the C- CJC. So here's how we're dealing with the problem. The first issue is if you don't stop paper that you need to store from being created, then you're wasting a lot of your time trying to get rid of the approximately hundred and fifty thousand boxes of documents we have in the county that we eventually have to go through, destroy what we can destroy, digitize what we need to digitize. So looking at the future, we have a program called SharePoint. And Carlos can tell you a lot more of the detail, but basically it is a document managed system, a state of the art, and Carlos has a team from his department that is going to every office and department, working with that office and department to implement SharePoint. And when SharePoint is fully implemented, it will allow us to digitize all the documents that come out of that department. So the apart, that department or office will be paperless. And the only hard copies of documents that will be allowed to be kept will be in the office of the producer while they're still working on that case or project or what it might be. So when Carlos completes his travels through county departments and offices and teaches each one how to do it, we will have created for the future a paperless system. And I'll have Carlos tell you what department he's gone through already, where he plans to go, when he thinks this will be finished. But a lot of his schedule is based on who's moving in to the Criminal Justice Center because we have to have those offices and departments finished by the time we move into the Criminal Justice Center. So that's our plan for the future with respect to creating a paperless Wayne County and getting our arms around the disaster we have now. So at the same time, we have a tracking document retention committee working group that I have led for about the last nine months now. We have many projects going on. The first one is Vigliati. Vigliati had about a hundred thousand, give or take. No one even knew exactly how many boxes of documents we had over there. But working with the probate court, the circuit court, the clerk's office, Scanning America, who is our, is our, uh, document managed vendor who picks up truckloads of documents that need to be digitized, takes them to their plant, their offices and digitizes the documents. And we've, and they have gone through about ten thousand documents already and digitized them. We completed all the probate court documents. We're into the circuit court documents. We're soon gonna start working with the clerk documents. The sheriff has already removed a hundred boxes from there. So we have this committee. It meets every month and, uh, hopefully, it's hard to say how long it's gonna take, but hopefully within a couple of years, we will have cleaned out, uh, Vigliati, stopped paying rent on a building that we've paid rent for, I don't know, thirty, forty years. So that's going well. We also have a separate working group dealing with all the offices and departments that are moving into the Criminal Justice Center. We are cataloging all the boxes of documents they've created. We are in the midst of doing the work to determine which of those documents can be destroyed, what can be digitized before, um, the move to the Criminal Justice Center. And any other boxes will be moved to HQ, which is our other document, major document storage facility that presently has about forty thousand boxes of documents. Much more detail of what we're doing with document management. And frankly, the sins of the past in not dealing with this much sooner is making this a sizable operation to get done. Gonna take years to get to where we want to, but we're finally on the right track. And frankly, something as dry as document management excites me every time I go to a meeting and I, and, and I hear the excitement in the voices of the people I'm working with. Cause there's, in addition to the economic benefits, there are really non-economic benefits in working in a clean space. You can hear it as the subsequent meetings occurs and people talk about the jails that we have cleaned up. We still got more work to do, but you cannot believe how clean our jails are now, which was a tangent to the effort to get the boxes out of there too. To the corp consul's office, to M and B, to the sheriff we're working on now. It not only is something that finally needs to be done, that will save a great deal of money for the county in the future. It is just fun to hear employees talk about how much wonderful it is to work in a clean environment. So anyway, there's so much more I could say on this subject. Uh, I'm not sure I met Madam Chair's requirement to be brief. I did the best I could. But at this point, let me turn it, let me turn it over to Carlos.
Well, thank you. Um, that's an amazing introduction, but I feel like I can't really get started until I point something else out. There is no way we could have made the progress that I'm gonna talk about without having a team of people who are already motivated to do this kind of work when I got here and helped add into what I needed to do. This couldn't have happened if my leadership team in this body didn't recognize the urgency and, um, respond accordingly and empower me to be able to deliver these things. That's really a whole new effort and I, it's, it's feeling most ashamed to act like that has a lot to do with me, although I like, I like to think of myself as being. So I respect what you said about trying to be brief, and I've been thinking about this, uh, since I received a request to talk about this. And I was trying to point out, how do I make something that's extremely complicated very simple, make it bite size? But you can ask questions and I can enumerate if you want, but how, how do I make sense? So when we talk about document management, um, you think of it as an electronic document that has been retrieved.
Yeah, we're getting some feedback. If everyone could put their, uh, their, uh, phone on mute and just let Carlos be unmuted. Go ahead, Carlos. Get closer to the microphone, Carlos, also.
Don't mind my close up to the camera then. All right. So the bottom line is if you want to retrieve a document in a document management system, most end users are just gonna think of it as you click a button and it happens. The, the truth is, there's about, I enumerated it on my own time, about thirty-five distinct technologies that touch that process and have to work in concert for that to actually happen. And so I thought about what about that process actually was adequate to work when I walked in the building one? And the actual answer was not a single thing. And so then I asked myself, okay, well, what kind of progress have we made in the last four and a half years towards addressing those issues? And I can tell you that we have addressed all of those issues except for, I believe, three, which are in process of being fixed right now. Right? And one of the big main ones is, is something that's not really transparent to anyone who doesn't love technology. It's as communication comes together, there's a special technology that links the hub together, right? And that's a fiber optic backbone. Um, we just recently purchased that and we're in the middle of actually doing that upgrade now. And those kinds of changes and upgrades actually have to happen while the business is even working. So it adds a whole nother level of complexity to what's going on. And so you think to yourself, well, for that kind of, to touch thirty-five distinct technologies to, to procure them, convince the board, bring them in, install them, have service contracts, train the team on all of those components, plus train the, the accounting on how to make that work, I must be working with a, a, at least large enough group to, to do this kind of work. And the truth is in two thousand eight, my student, my department had a hundred and twenty people. Uh, right now we have fifty-four. And you, you know, this body has asked me a number of times, do I want to grow my department, um, faster to meet all these, these needs? And the answer to that is actually no, we've been growing at the appropriate pace. There is a cost in training people, um, and, and doing this kind of work at the same time. And the team that I'm working with right now is working at an inspired pace. I mean, if you talk to even just my trainer, um, who came on board just two years ago, if I sit in the same room and hear him talk about the two hundred and twenty webinars that he's put in place just during COVID to help people work remotely, I mean, he fires me up and it's, it's kind of amazing to actually watch. So I guess the reason I talk, I wanted to mention that part is we talk about document management system. We talk about scanning these documents into a system. We talk about the retrieval and the ability to share that over a common platform. None of that would have been possible if we didn't address the core enterprise infrastructure issues, which we actually have uh, over the last four and a half years. And so Judge did a great job of explaining, um, how difficult scanning documents is. But there's other complications. Um, different groups have different needs of a document management system platform. So for instance, like the prosecutor attorney's office, they need a case management system that specifically integrates with a bunch of different, uh, law enforcement entities, and that has to be specialized for them. Well, that doesn't encompass all the documents that that group actually manages. So while they're gonna have this case management system and while we provided them a storage platform that can scale up and deliver documents and video as fast as they need it to be, um, stored and back it up and, and, and address all those concerns. But we also have this SharePoint platform, which fits all the normal business needs and is also CGS compliant. At the same time, um, we have implemented a, a, a remote tool of VPN that actually is CGS compliant as well, uh, which honestly, frankly, until this, this pandemic, we had no, no need for that kind of a device. But now we can actually, um, host something like three thousand remote connections, um, including, um, anything that has to do with criminal justice transactions and do it, um, in a compliant manner. All of that stuff had to be addressed over the last four and a half years. I get in the weeds a little bit too quickly, so I do apologize. I guess what I wanted to say is we've been paying attention to the details that matter. We've enjoyed the trust that you guys have given us to do that. We've tried to do responsibly. A lot of these upgrades actually ended up costing less than the original technology we had because the original technology was old and unsupported. So we've been actually increasing technology, saving money, training the team, growing it appropriate, at appropriate speeds, and we have been focusing on rolling out SharePoint. I believe at last count, we have five departments, um, implemented and we have eight in progress. I, I don't know if that helps, but go ahead and ask questions, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Carlos. Oh, waiting for more. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Carlos. I've been waiting for more. Commissioner Varga. You're on mute, Commissioner Varga.
Well, when I got here about 20 years ago, we were worried about firewalls. That was our, our major concern. So we've come a long way. I, you sort of told me that hiring more people would probably not be a good idea. My idea was to possibly bring in some contractors for the elected officials to assist in getting everything that they need to go. I would love to see us do what the Secretary of State does with getting just about everything done online that they possibly can to cut down on the need for additional space, for additional staffing we need because they still have to process. But the, mostly the space and having the people just be convenienced by being able to do the things from home that we can. So Carlos, there's no more, we can't add on contractors that would complement what you already are doing that would speed up any of these good works that you're already in the process of doing.
So we do use staff augmentation when it makes sense, usually on a project by project basis. So there are some great examples, for example, we're trying to get desktop computers out and it's just, you've got to get someone to literally unpack the boxes, image the machine, deliver them and make sure the, the end user can actually log on properly. When we had that mass rollout, we had to use staff augmentation because we simply just didn't have enough, enough bodies. When, when it's a much more intricate technology implementation, it's not just as simple as hiring a staff augmented person. A lot of times it requires a company, much like what we're doing with ERP, when we hired Sher Road to help us implement the system. It just requires a certain level of expertise and a full blown project, which would require an RFP or something of that nature. But no, I'm not opposed to asking for help when I need it. It just, I'm very careful to make sure that the help that I ask for actually helps and doesn't actually increase the workload of my team. I, you know, if it's all right with you, I think, I think I saw a question in here about the clerks machine.
Yes, please answer that.
I don't, I don't want to, um, address it specifically. There, there's a little bit of confusion specifically when it comes to the clerk in that my group actually provides some of the computing resources for them. But they also have a large portion that is provided from Third Circuit Court. So there's some of their computers, even some of their email addresses and that kind of a thing. I believe there's been some kind of confusion as to what to do with folks who are being supported by the Third Circuit Court that didn't receive laptops. And, and that's just a very complicated answer. For the people who, for the people who work at the clerk, who have Wayne County user IDs and have Wayne County assets, they have had their, have been given their laptops. So I hope that answers the, the question in the comments.
You're on mute, Madam Chair.
Sorry, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I was watching for your mouth to move. I didn't see you doing that. That's why I didn't say anything. But I, Carlos, first of all, I wanted to applaud what you've done up to this point. As you know, I've been very supportive. I've, in the very first, when I started seeing the contracts for Vigliotti building and why are we storing all this information that, and, and then, then I heard the prosecutor's office and others that said, we have to spend time to pull out these old files. And, and we could, we waste so much time and resources, man slash lady power. And, and it's just, it's such a waste of money and I, I just applaud what you're doing and, and that Mr. Kaufman is also on, certainly on board in the administration. I, I applaud them for that because I think in the long run, we'll save tons of money for the taxpayers. We can use that money to go towards other things that we, instead of asking for more dollars in some cases. And in the long run, it'll pay off handsomely for everyone. But I did want to ask, and I'm sure, I think I've mentioned this in the past about that are all these programs that we'll be using for document management. They are, I'm, I'm assuming that everything, you're making sure there's redundancy on everything that we have as we destroy the paper files that there are, like maybe at least a couple of sources where these are stored electronically that we won't have a big meltdown at some point.
Okay. So yeah, that's, thank you. You're giving me the opportunity to get a little bit more in depth with, with what happens. So one of the big problems about just having a paper file, obviously, is that there's only one copy really and it's exposed to the elements and paper does have a shelf life. Now we do it to the credit of the teams who take care of this paper. Our warehouses are surprisingly well-kept. They, they really are and that, that's a credit to them. But what we really want in a government entity is you want to be able to, you want to be able to access the, the file and hopefully more than one person access the file. That, that'd be great. You want to have it in, in more than one location, you want to have backups and you want to be able to prove who accessed it. So for highly sensitive documents, documents, you want to be able to have some kind of an audit trail that shows who's actually interested in looking at these things. Now, the new, the new system has that capability and we also have other technologies like Veronis that we've put in place that help make sure that in case someone just gets curious and happens to have this access, that if for some reason they went, they, you see a large amount of files being accessed that aren't typically accessed, we'll actually get a warning and we'll be able to call and ask, hey, what's going on? You, you never look at this, this information. Legal hold, legal hold has been a tremendous problem in the past. And with the new systems that we're putting in place, it's built for government use. And so you can actually throw documents in legal hold and it doesn't count towards your space requirements. As long as you have to, it could be a hundred years or longer. There is no policy as to when we have to release a legal hold. And the system backs up the information automatically. So as long as the, the file exists for 15 minutes, then there is a backup and it not only keeps a backup, but it keeps the changes. So if you have a document that's been updated, it also has the old version of that document.
Okay, one follow-up, Madam Chair, just the, as far as what you just mentioned, prior approval is required for anyone to have access to those, that information that's, that's now on the cloud. Or I would assume that that's already in place, correct? For this company or the, trying to remember, oh, SharePoint. Has to be someone that knows what this organization or person is, you know, that tries to access the information.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of security checkpoints we've added. There's multi-factor authentication, so you can't just simply connect to SharePoint. We've tried to make it as easy to access as possible. So there's not, you know, a million usernames and passwords you have to type in all the time. So we've centralized the management of that. What's it called? We have limited the areas in the, in the world where you can actually access those systems. So you can't just be trying to randomly access it from Africa. If for some reason you are traveling to Africa or India or anywhere else, you can call into the help desk and they will actually whitelist your name for the term of your trip. And then we will return it back to normal. So you can't just simply leave North America and access our systems. Between that, multi-factor authentication, between the password policies that we have to put in place for CGS requirements, all those components we're doing, and, and the, you know, the file monitoring systems, we're, we're doing quite a lot. It's not perfect. You can't, you can't avoid all risk, but we're avoiding a lot of risk.
And FOIA requests for those, that information that's on the same process?
Yeah, a hundred percent. The, the, the government version of Office 365 that we've moved to has a e-discovery component that's meant specifically for FOIA. So instead of a request having to go through multiple different departments to withdraw that information, we're actually able to centralize that and give access to very few people so that they can scan and do what they need to do and redact as necessary for FOIA requests. So it's much simpler.
Okay. And the last thing, the prosecutor's office, every year when we have budget hearings and, and I appreciate this discussion to, we're digging into something deeper than I think we have been able to in the past. The, as far as the document management program prosecutor's office, I assume that's probably one of your earliest that you got to or you're in the process. Could you tell us where that one's at? Because I know that has been something that she has been talking to and making part of her presentation to the Ways and Means Committee at budget time every year.
Yeah. So we're hitting that on two fronts. There's the SharePoint side, which is the, the common platform that everyone's using. And my team, my technology experience team and my enterprise applications team has been working with Mark Hindeland, who is a wonderful IT executive to work with. He's the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office's IT guy. And he is just, he is, he is working very hard to work with our team to make sure the documents that need to be scanned are being scanned. We have actually been able to provide him with a storage platform that's going to, I think I mentioned this earlier, earlier, that's scalable and able to retain and manage the number of files that they're going to want to use, plus manage the backups and the chain of custody and all those pieces. And also serve up the video surveillance. So I don't have a specific answer for you other than when I talk to my tech experience folks about this, they are making tremendous progress. And they're, they're going as fast as possible and they're handling it.
But that is, that department is in the process, right? In this process you're working on. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Final question from Commissioner Varga. And Commissioner Varga's on mute now.
Mark Hindeland's here. He has his hand up.
Directions. On that point, I was wondering, are we, is the prosecutor able to now get warrants signed electronically or do they still have the, the locals still have to come in to do all of that? Where are we on the locals being able to talk to the prosecutors?
And I think Mark has his hand up. Mark, did you want to respond to that?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak. Also, thank you to Carlos and his team for the, the support that they have given us, especially over this last year. To address Commissioner Varga's specific concern of whether we are able to receive warrant requests digitally by systems, talking to systems. We are not there yet, but we have made a, a big step to Commissioner Anderson's point, which is we have an RFP out in the field for that system. So that is a, a big milestone to have crossed and that is thanks to many county departments to get there. So right now, the system that we are using is a combination of email, fax and paper. In addition to our evidence.com lifeboat that is still keeping us afloat.
Thank you for all the work that you do there at the prosecutor's office on this. Is there anything that we could do to speed this up, Carlos?
At, at this point, I think we're moving in the right direction. The RFP is out. That has to be, go through the due process of it all. Once that's complete, you know, we'll do whatever we can to make it as fast as possible. And if there is something that needs to be brought up, I, I will definitely bring it up.
Mr. Kaufman, do we need additional dollars or what do we have to do? What are you expecting from the commission as far as dollar wise? For all of this, are, is that going to be all budgeted into the next budget cycle?
The answer is yes, except for during the year when needs come up in all these various computer projects we got going on and there's so many, we will come to you for a budget adjustment. I've come to you for a budget adjustment once on the Vigliotti project and I'm going to be coming to you again within the next couple of weeks or month for a budget adjustment, which is merely going to be to get money to authorize use of our federal money. Because we started Vigliotti with a million dollars of CARES money. And we're going to, and we've used that up, I think effectively, and we're going to come again soon, asking for more there. And that would be the pattern with any project we have. And that, you know, one of the problems we've had at the county for many decades is we throw money at a problem before we really look at the big picture, understand the details that really need to be worked out and then know what financial resources can help us do, do that. We're committed to that kind of approach and I don't authorize people coming to you for money until I'm convinced that this will enhance our ability to move the project faster. And that's been our approach.
Thank you for all the hard work and I know last time we talked many moons ago about this coordination, you really did take it at heart, actually. That was one of my big concerns and, and you've done more than I really did expect so far. So it's good to know that behind the scenes, everything is happening and we can boast about things that you thought were going unnoticed prior to. So thank you very much for all the IT things that you are doing and I'm sure that you have all of our support.
Yeah, and I thank the commission because you have supported every step of the way and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm done for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Varga for requesting this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Perez, for all the due diligence that you're doing on this. I think it's important to remember to work smarter and not harder. And I think this is a way of us working smarter and more efficiently. So thank you and I look forward to continue progress on this and getting this completed. I'm sure you are as, as well. So thank you for coming before us today with this update. Hopefully we'll have another update a few months to see where you are at that point. Thank you both. All right. And next item, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk.
Item number four is a presentation by Jason Burkle and Bob Walters of Div Dad Inc.
Okay, they have graciously, this, I've asked them if they would mind presenting to the Government Operations Committee and not today. So they will be presenting at the direction of Chair Bob at an upcoming phase in Government Operations Committee. So thank you for coming and thank you for listening to our meetings today. But we look forward to getting that information that you have to present at Government Operations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, sir. Next item, please.
Such other matters as may properly be submitted before the committee.
Any other such matters? Hearing none, next item.
Public comments.
Anyone from the public wishing to address the Wayne County Commission, Committee or the whole? You could unmute everyone. Anyone willing, wishing to address the Wayne County Commission on the phone or on Zoom or in the chat?
If I may, Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
AskMeLocal1659, one of my questions that are going to come onto public comment were already addressed in regards to the monies that you guys are going to look into for the employees that have suffered. I am working currently still on the issue with the laptops, with the employees in regards to the clerk's office. There's some mix-up between the tug of war and the court and Wayne County. This is a very bad issue. You have people that are being exposed to the pandemic and losing money. This is very, very serious. These employees were on the line today, listening to this meeting, listening to the back and forth. They're texting me during this meeting, they're contacting me, they're hearing all this and, and they, they just don't understand where there's a resolution. I understand most of my entities work between the county authorities, elected officials. It's so much mixing in this melting pot that you all as commissioners don't understand. This is why you can't keep people. This is a mess. It's too much mixing of the monies, it's too much mixing of the government entities, it's too much mixing of the controls where no one comes together and what suffers are your employees. That's why you can't hire people in, that's why you can't get anybody to come here for no money. And then if you bring contractors, workers in, I'm going to tell you, you're going to get what you pay for. Just like with the state of Michigan, the Wayne County child support entity, they're governed by contract workers. They can't keep anybody in because it's a high turnover. This needs to be cleaned up. And that is my public comment. Thank you all for your time and you have a great day. The other issues that I emailed do not need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, can we have your name for the record, please?
President Buffington of Local, AskMe1659.
Thank you, Ms. Buffington. Thank you so much for your comment. Is there anyone else for public comments? Okay, thank you so much. At this time, next item, Madam.
So I just want to be clear, Madam Chair, President Buffington, I received several emails from you for public comment. I don't have to read any of those. Is that what you said?
Um, yes, you, you, if, if you have time, you may read it into, or you can just send it to the commissioners if you like. It's up to you.
You have emails from Mr. Buffington, Madam Clerk? They weren't the ones that were read to the record last week, correct? Is that additional?
These are from today.
Oh, okay, go ahead. We can read.
President Buffington here. Mr. Meyer spoke of essential workers. There needs to be a clean up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You mean those. I thought there were emails. No, I think the ones in the chat were addressed.
Okay, that's from the chat. Yeah. This was an email to me.
Okay, go ahead.
There needs to be a cleanup on the word essential. Local1659 employees came in when others were at home being paid. Employers did not get in, get it in writing. They were verbally promised. So they came in to work that monies would be given as bonus of sorts for taking the risk when people were dying. The slap in the face is how everyone else is raised to heroism. But these government employees that are underpaid and took the risk continue to be overlooked and underappreciated. Why were the Wayne County 1659 employees and the authorities tied into not deemed frontline or essential? Even the nurses and especially jail staff, even though clerico and everyone and anyone exposed deemed essential. I have another from MDBs. Wayne County employees are being subject to COVID and forced to work without pay or by utilizing our vacation time. We were reimbursed and I was told by HR that has stopped. So those who don't have vacations slash sick time, go without pay. Please get reimbursement for being off for COVID reasons. And the last one from MDBs. Most county employees who have been here for the past ten to fifteen years have not seen a raise. We all know inflation and cost of living expenses occur most every year. We are paid at the bottom of the scale while nobody has reached the middle or top of their pay scale in fifteen years. This is not acceptable and unheard of for county government. McDonald's gets a raise on a regular basis. Please help county employees gain a pay raise. Thank you, Michelle Deves. That was my last one, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Adjournment.
So moved.
All right. Thought you all want to stay a little bit longer. Okay. And supported for adjournment. Please remember that we will reconvene our full board meeting on next Thursday. Please remember to send in your appointments for the women's commission so that we can do all of those appointments on next Thursday as well. Okay, we've moved and supported for adjournment. All in favor, say hi. Thank you so much, being adjourned. Thank you all so much.